Item and that's the Shoals subdivision down on Hitchcock and. North Roads and we had Larry and I met with Forrest and Ed Reed here a couple of weeks ago. And we'll get an update on that and see where we go.
So this was presented.
Footprint really have to check.
Actually has not changed and we've. We've even gone with. Rest lots. They have two plans. This is the plans with. With the rest.
No, no.
Changes for a reason, so I guess we might as well hear it. So this was presented earlier.
Andy, grab one, sit right down.
When this was presented earlier, there was an elevation data. Now we have. Albatopo drainage elevation. Which is, I made it on this smaller sheet here, just easier to manage. So if you look on the smaller sheet, the drainage. Hitchcock Road is all. Flowing towards Hitchcock Road. And that goes into a road ditch. Down the road and it goes under the road into a creek. That goes into Chitango Creek. Just talking to Andy about that culvert. And he sees no problem with that, you know, handling it, if anything happens, he would be.
That's the existing culvert, Andy, now.
It's actually probably one of the few areas that we have a problem with positive drainage. Now, we don't have any issues down there with that little corridor, so.
Then the ones on North Road are flowing northwesterly and end up in that stream or that larger. Stream which flows into Anida Lake.
At the Marina?
At the Marina on the other end.
With the beavers.
With the beavers, that's the only problem.
We had talked about. In the meeting with Larry and Frank. Doing easements along the property lines. Now that I was looking at it again. The ones on Hitchcock Road especially, all that water is going straight towards the road, so. Water's not going across lots.
They're gonna have to raise, are they gonna raise their lots?
They can raise their lots, but. The way between the houses is it will be natural.
It's actually pretty high down there, those lots, they're not, it's not a low lying land. Believe it or not.
And then on North Road. You know, there are more. A little bit, you know, crosslots. You know, might not have got a data heading these men there. But would be a private, isn't nothing that. Town would want, so would be, there'd be controlled by deed covenants. You know, it has to be installed and.
How would they get it enforced?
It's enforced by the Dutch Schultz and that, you know, really.
Well, once they sell them, they're on the land.
Who's the recipient of the easement?
So. Recipient of the easement would, there is no recipient. Of easement, I guess, and these. It's more of a. They have a restriction on it twenty feet. Per the track connect, they're not able to build in there.
It would be a deed restriction.
It's more of a deed restriction, yes.
Again, who's gonna enforce that?
The only one who could is the.
That'd be civil action, I mean, that would.
Shout to these, yes.
Well.
This is.
So.
It would be civil between neighbors if somebody adversely puts their water on somebody else.
They'd ask kindly that you, if you instructed to clean it up or restore it, or it's gotta have. You're gonna, these easements would have some kind of standard, there would be something attached to. Each lot somewhere, another sheet on this. That would show what the construction of those would have to be, what that lot would have to be. Okay, yeah, there you go.
And each lot now, you know, will have the easements on it, so, you know, they're gonna. Know it exists. But you're right, you know, it's hard to. The only way to, must the town must these easements, so.
Wouldn't he have to put that into his writing in the description when they sell the property? He's gonna have to put that into legal documents when they buy that lot to build it. That's that easement and that drainage would have to go. The streets and the ditch.
Yes.
Where are you proposing is gonna construct these?
Just the general contractors on each lot, you know, whoever that may be.
The developer. The property line's gonna slice right through this thing.
Well, these guys, my understanding is Schultz is gonna develop, he just wants to sell the lot.
Just sell the lots. And building codes in New York's. State Drainage. All that is already in place and has to go.
Got a great.
The building process.
Got a grading plan for your house and everything else.
Which is early.
I mean, initially, initially, there's not, I can see, I can see, I'm just. In my opinion, and the board together, I can see this being established correctly. Because he's not gonna give COs and stuff like that until it's done according to those standards. But ten years down the road. Or when somebody does something, if they did untoward, that causes the neighbor problems. Then that's gonna have to be a civil action, in other words, they, the town would have, the town would have no, no impact there. I mean, that, I'm not saying that that's wrong, I'm just saying. You come back and say to Larry, and Larry just goes, hey, you know, take him to court. Huh?
Right.
Take him to court, that's about all you could do.
Typically on these, on these house lot. On these house lot tracks, we don't even have reasons, we don't shoot elevations. You know, these lots are two and a half acres, acre and a half. You really don't even need this, the one reason this.
Well, we're probably using the wrong term, they're not technically easements, they're deed restrictions. They're not because, as Rick said, you give an easement to someone. There's no one here, there's no one here, the owner himself has his own. They share, they share the common boundary, and so they have a common responsibility. And so each owner, if that was fully developed, would have a common responsibility with one on the left and one on the right.
I would agree to that.
That's, that's what you're proposing.
If it's needed. I would actually like to get rid of all the easements or the deed restriction along the property lines. Like I said, that's all covered in codes, these are large acreage lots. Smith Ridge Road, like I brought up at the meeting. There's a whole bunch of road lots there, they didn't have to do any of this. Not that everyone.
It's not quite the same.
Yeah, you've got a DEC wetlands, there's a flood plain on this property. There's a, I mean, you might not see it now, but once you start moving dirt out there.
Well, there is no DEC wetland on this, but the, there is a. Federal wetland, that's only a necessary.
That's not on this map though, right?
Yes, it is.
I'm looking at the, okay, yeah.
Put on this corner or nothing, huh, it just becomes. This corner of Hitchcock. Just vacant. They don't own it. So lots, lots eleven, lots eleven and twelve, the water on the site itself runs to the southwest. Does any of it, I'm assuming there's a culvert along North Road and water, some water would run into that. So from that point, does it run north or does it run back south? There's a road ditch. And that runs down the road into that. Into that culvert, okay. It doesn't all run north, okay. That's all from the road ditch. Right, I'm just wondering if the water's gonna come back toward that or go north up toward. And they all know the land to the north also. Oh, okay. They all know the land around it except westwardly boundary on Hitchcock. If, I would like to see all those, you know, deed restricted drainage easements gone, but. Those were all brought up at an earlier meeting with another plan without elevations. Now we have all the elevations and the grading, and we can see it's, you know, really not going across lots.
The other thing is, and we talked about that in the meeting. You're grading into a common, a common outlet, a stream, a natural, a natural outlet to that, this area. Rich, I'm looking at you. We need. Where, my understanding of what has been, that even after construction, your ambient, your ambient flow cannot exceed. The current undeveloped flow.
Yeah, I mean.
Because this is not going directly, if this were going directly to the outlet, Anida Lake. Boom, no problem, Chitango Creek, and they owned everything along that way, I don't think there'd be any question at all. But the problem is, it goes into private property.
Right.
Before it gets to an outlet.
Right, and they, you know, where here, you've got it going to a drainage swell on Hitchcock, but. I mean, they should be trying to retain as much on site there as they can. I mean, they shouldn't be outletting here for all these lots for North Road going off to somebody's private property.
Of course, we have no idea, we're just looking at the, conceptually, if you've got water flowing, that means you've got water.
It's not private property, the water's going there now. That's the road.
Now you're directing the water towards a specific place.
It's already going there, so.
Yeah, but you're putting in, you're putting in driveways, roofs, you know, you got, you got rain, now you're gonna have, now you're gonna have an increased. Ambient, you know, flow, and you.
On this, on this, you had asked Ed to do that calculation, and Ed said it's gonna amount to like spitting into the water, because it's. That. On the other side of the road, there's a huge water wet area that, all that water comes through there too. So what those houses on North Road would add, Ed. Does not think it's gonna be hardly measurable, but you did ask him to do that, I asked him if he had it done, it's not done yet, but. I will get that.
Here's, I mean, if, 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 use the name, if Ostriano comes in here, he's trying to sell that property. Or somebody comes in there and they say, hey. Do you know how much water's coming my way? We're gonna sit here and go, we don't know.
That's how it is in any house you build anywhere, you're adding the water into. Whatever drainage is in there.
I thought the law said, check me, Rich, he's on his head, you can't, you can't increase the ambient flow of that stream.
Any building permit now has to be analyzed, because anytime you build a house in the driveway, you're adding flow to something, so.
But if it's a road ditch, Andy said he's geared up to handle it.
This, this whole road ditch, that drainage is actually part of the whole area.
Okay, I'm, I'm, you guys have got a way in, I, I, I don't have an answer.
What is the disadvantage of having the easement or having a deed restriction? I mean, you say you wanna have removed, I mean, what is, I mean. There is no disadvantage, other than it to, you know, it's a restriction under. Right, but if we have the restriction on it, why, why is that gonna be to the detriment of even selling these properties, I mean. It's just a way of kind of keeping liability, you know, to the property owners rather than having it come back toward the town or.
You do deed restrictions, that's one thing, you do easements, they've got to go to somebody.
Right.
And that, you're pointing, you're pointing, you're pointing the town to have a responsibility to maintain them.
Right, but that's what.
And that's what we don't know, we don't really wanna get into.
But the reality is though, that the board needs to understand. First what the grading on each lot's gonna be and that you have submitted a. Or no. And you gotta, and you gotta.
You're seeing what we have, this is what we have.
The board's gonna know where the water's going, how much dirt is gonna potentially be moved, I know, I know Larry's gonna, you know, look at that when building permits come in, but. You know, the board has before a twelve lot subdivision. You know, it's gonna have twelve new homes and previous coverage from driveways, the house, et cetera. And the water's gonna go somewhere, and the board has an obligation to make sure that. You know, the plan for where that water's gonna go is gonna be sufficient. Not only to protect, you know, just the general public, the road, et cetera, but, you know, all these other parcels, because. You can have deed restrictions in here and, you know, et cetera, but the first people they're gonna come to is the town. They're gonna say, well, how did this get approved without looking at the drainage? So it's, you know, I think at some point, the town engineer, well, you have. Correct, but at some point, I think the town's engineer, the board needs to get some, you know, somebody to look at it.
Why I disagree with that, because you're asking a contractor or a developer that has twelve lots to spend ten thousand dollars. For an engineer that's already looking at an engineer's print, so. And I think that's a big problem in this town and other towns is, we're double paying engineers. That'd be like us hiring, that'd be like us hiring an attorney to check your work, so, you know.
That's not, that's not uncommon anywhere.
But this is simple, this is a very simple, you have twelve lots.
Well, I don't, I don't know about, you know, what the engineering expense would be on the town side to.
It's a lot.
To look at that, but.
Well, that, we don't know what that is. That, 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 that got things off to the wrong foot, because you didn't, as you stated earlier. You didn't have anything developed, and they were talking water, water, drainage districts, and all kinds of things at that point. Now you refine this, and now you can be specific, what do we want, what do we want to have evaluated? Okay, you just wanna double check, make sure that, you know, this all looks pretty straightforward as far as Hitchcock Road goes. I've got some concerns about what we legally can do. Over on, over on North Road, is without, without some calculation to support. Really good calculations to support the fact that we are within any accepted tolerances of, of that, of that outlet.
Well, the only like advantage that I can see of these deed restrictions, because Larry knows, we see it down there a lot. I don't necessarily foresee it with this property, because it is fairly high, but what happens is, you know, lot two. He buys and he's a little bit more wet than lot one, and he builds his up, and he pushes all his water over on lot one, right to this property line. And then lot one says, well, I'm gonna build mine higher than yours, and they get in this. Happens all over.
Sure.
In North of thirty-one, so I, I'm not necessarily opposed to if that's a, I think it's a simple solution. But then you're not in this battle of. Well, they put my, that water on the median back and forth, so it seems like it would be fairly simple.
Plus, plus they appear to be immovable.
Oh, right, it totally would be.
As opposed to the wetland model that they use on the other side of the street. Where we get calls all the time to clean out those.
Right. So, you know, that isn't necessarily horrible on that piece.
Hitchcock's, I think, very, Hitchcock's very durable, but without, pretty, pretty straightforward.
So like you said, that, that takes a lot of that out there, we see it all the time.
Yeah.
Again, without, that's without involving the highway department and the drainage easement.
I mean, you're talking, these are two wicker lots, you know, I mean, these are big lots, you put a house in the middle of two acres. Isn't it, how much waterfalls can be there?
You've got fifty, sixty feet of drainage before you even hit the side.
Right.
If not more, yeah.
Right.
Fifty, sixty, yeah.
I mean, obviously, the bigger, under construction, that would be a big concern, but once the grass.
Because of the other house, so you have. A hundred and twenty feet between these houses. It's not a high density thing. Is the town, Andy, is the town responsible for that ditch between lots ten and eleven?
No, county is.
County is, okay. So I mean, in the event that, I mean, there's no, I mean, would they have some kind of, I mean, domain on that property because of?
Uh, it's within our easement, like county, like on Hitchcock, that would be my responsibility.
Hitchcock's town road.
Right, back.
North Road's county.
Oh, county, okay, that's it.
Yeah, North Road's county, so, but those are very well maintained ditches.
Uh, you've had a lot of experience with those.
I mean, you get over to Damon's, it's, you know, there is, the woods is definitely wet and it waters, it's tough. And that's where I was saying, they're fighting back and forth on who can fill more, and it's a battle of who's pushing water where. I don't necessarily foresee that here, but it would give some protection of that happening.
And we do, on the adjacent parcel of Ostriano's. We've got a multifamily of beavers that backed up this creek.
Yeah.
And it's running high right now, but it's still flowing. And also, I should tell you that there's been, on Ostriano's, his phase two was sold. And was already starting to get engineers calling about this, that, and the other thing. So there's gonna be some development coming in in the future for phase two. Which this stream runs into.
That stream needs to be addressed, but that's a whole other subject.
Yeah, that's. County responsibility. Do they have an easement through there, Larry, that, that old creek?
It's a federal wetland.
Is, is North Road a county road?
Yes.
That's county, yeah.
All the way from.
But.
Chester.
As that moves forward, I think we, you wanna talk about some type of easements in here, because. My phone is ringing off the hook to win their dick out beaver dams, and we've done it before. And I'm not doing it anymore on private property. And, but the thing is, nobody wants to help themselves, so I go in today, we knock out the dam, tomorrow the dam's back up, and they have a water problem, it's like, we have to take care of the beavers. So they just want the town to do everything. So, and we can't, we can't. Trap beavers and chew beavers and pig out beaver dams when we got roads to repair, so. But again, that doesn't really, there's great drainage, but they cause a real problem.
Well, it's just a simple problem, you can't relocate them easily or anything, right?
The big beavers are tough.
And I drive, I drive this every day, and I look over here, even after the heavy rains weekend. This parcel was, there was no standing water except near lot eleven, right near the front ditch on North Road. All the other lots were pretty dry, the mowed parts anyways, the back parts are all wooded. But. I would say that from lot ten to, it drains towards Hitchcock. And then twelve and eleven drain towards this little creek. That's just the natural flow of water.
On the road ditch, yeah.
Okay, let's.
And it's a big road ditch.
Comes back this way.
Does they have a high water table in that area, or how close to surface is it?
I don't know, did you do any borings there? I know that years ago, Mr. Barrett's daughter had excavated for a house there. That was one of his last arrows on the grocer, pushed up all the dirt, and there was no standing water up to this side.
His house is all around, but.
I said, it's probably one of the higher, drier areas.
On, on the Hitchcock side, yeah, yeah.
And North Road, I mean, just the, this area, you get in Barrett's wall, you get over Damon's, everything is wall and wet.
So we need to have. If we require deed restrictions, that has to go to engineers for approval or whatever?
No, well, that, I, we gotta look legal here, that's gotta be, if that, if that's something you accept, that's a private. I, I don't know whether you can require the owner to put in deed, I don't even know legality of that.
You'd have to have like a, maybe a notation on the subdivision map. And then a condition of the approval would have. That there be a deed restriction, that, you know, whatever that area is, is used for drainage only and conveyance of, of.
So that would have to be fleshed out, that language would have to.
And I think the board would wanna see whatever that language is being proposed to be put in those deeds that are gonna be sold for these lots.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm still, I'm still uncomfortable with, with North Road.
Is that covenanted or no?
Deed restriction covenant, I mean, you know.
But it's private, private treaty.
The, the Bernie and Howell housing tract in Chitango. There was a lot of pockets of Indian artifacts, and we have, there's, there's deed restrictions on, on the use of all those areas. And this would be a good use of a deed restriction. The drainage easement was more of a, just, you know, presentation, deed restrictions are, what we would use for that.
I would take that more appropriate.
But I think you could show some type of grading plan for. That, that the builders would have to, you know. Comply with here with respect to these swells. So that there's, you know, it's clear what's gonna be expected to be constructed here, because again, Larry's gonna have to. Inspect that and issue building permits, et cetera.
He's got it written in. Worked out in two to one slopes and.
These, um, yeah, these lots are, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not all going to one building, so. We have no idea where you're gonna build the house, what they're gonna do, driveway on the left, driveway on the right, so there is no way of making a. General, you know, grading plan, and, you know, these lots are, are big lots, you know, who knows where they're gonna put them.
And I guess I think, again, I think that's where maybe a deed restriction on these lots, because you're selling individual lots, you're gonna. Keep that person from adversely affecting the lot next door, just by elevation.
Exactly, primarily on North Road, because it's some of those, the drainage is going toward the, the neighboring property, whereas on Hitchcock, it all appears to be flowing. Toward the culvert, and it's not crossing the property, so, you know, having them on those, I mean. I'm thinking along the lines of something's gonna happen down the road. At some point, and they're gonna come back, and they're gonna point the finger at the town, and, you know, we wanna have ourselves covered here, saying, you know. This is, you know, buyer beware, if you're buying this property, this is what we're saying needs to be addressed, and. Put it out there for them to understand when they're going to purchase the property. Wouldn't hurt to have my Hitchcock, if you have my North. I, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't think that that would cause an effect on the sale of the lot.
Yeah.
That is a lot.
There you go.
And as your own survey would show a ten foot offset on both sides for drainage. And you can't build within eight feet of the line anyways. So one side you wouldn't even be concerned, but the other side would be destructive.
They're not gonna hug the bond yard.
No, not at the shoulders, no.
There's so much rope, so wide, except their own. Another thing I wanna run past the board is, you know, they don't wanna do all these lots at once, so. Are they allowed to do four, or, or the Hitchcock? And if they did that, what would happen when they wanna do the rest?
Safest thing is to get the thing, get the, know where you're going with the whole thing.
Yes.
Then you could, then you can, uh.
Sell them all.
Yeah, huh, you could sell them all if somebody comes or whatever, but now the plan's in place. Uh, you know, we.
You don't, we don't have to develop them all, but.
You could phase them, I mean, I, that's what, you know, you could phase, phase Hitchcock, that could get one area for, or that could get approval and then you could come back and, you know, that would also give you, that would also give you some track record as to see how everything works Hitchcock wise. If you got any problems there, you know, but you're still gonna have to close off on this.
Well, I'm gonna get you that, uh, calculation and, you know, whatever it is, it is.
Well, I think we're gonna have to have a discussion here whether, whether we have B and L take a look at this. I don't think you're looking at, it shouldn't be a gargantuan thing here, it should be fairly, we're not talking.
Yeah, I mean, you can request, I mean, as long as the applicant submits a proposal for how they're dealing with the drainage and then you can have B and L's review limited to, um, a review just strictly on that.
So, I agree, that's all, you know, but it's all we're really.
But that's, again, that's.
Well, turn the structure, you got.
On Hitchcock Road too?
Pardon?
On Hitchcock?
I, I, I would just, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be much there.
It's definitely gonna be driving the cost up, but, that's it. These lots are two acre lots.
I know.
Rule lots, positive drainage going on to the road.
Okay, that should be really simple.
I agree with that, but it's not, it's, if this has to go to town engineering and review with B and L, it's gonna be not really simple.
Uh, well, we can, we need to take a look at, we can need to take a look at that somewhere, but you're gonna have, what more do we need if we're gonna go, you know, we, you know, we can come back and we'll, we'll try to hammer that out between now and next month, make sure we know what we're doing. Now, Rich, where are you, where are you, you expressed the thought that this need to be, the county, somebody in the county needs to.
Well, I think it will re- require county planning because it's, it's a subdivision, I think there's a county road here, so it does, it has to go to the county anyway. Um, you gotta do seeker and you also have to probably hold a public hearing as well.
Yeah, so that's the definite.
So there's still procedures to be, to be done.
Okay, let's schedule a public hearing for next month and we'll hammer out the idea of what we need to do here, what we need to do with, uh, with B and L. Uh, we gotta see county planning, I'm not, I'm not sure, we, we can send it to county plan. Um, let's see what they say, I'm, I'm not so sure, the board health also might be because this is now a, this is now a, uh, not a minor, but a major subdivision. That would be the only thing that would trigger county health help. But there again, you got all sewers and all water, what do they go say?
Well, let me change the.
We want the map to be the latest and the greatest, what, what you want on there, would have language, if we're gonna, you know, have language different than what we see here or anything else, so we can communicate to whoever are these potential or viewers, may or may not be.
Now, just a, just other curiosity, I'm just, why did this lot have to be down on Smith Road or Ridge Road?
Can't, can't answer that, but they weren't thirteen lots.
So, if it was half these lots, that would make a difference?
Could've, I don't know, I don't, I don't remember the circumstances.
I have the map and there's no topo, there's no deed restrictions on drainage and nothing, it was, it was just approved in the last year.
Yeah, I would go, yeah. They go, there are four lots. And they come back and shoot one up. Okay, Andy, you got any other concerns? Questions? Okay, let's, uh, have a motion to, uh, set a hearing for next month.
All right, I'll make the motion in a second.
Boris is gonna get whatever he's got together as quickly as possible and he'll figure out where all this stuff has gotta go.
Does any updates should go to the county, so if you can get those in as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at all the county planning and, and I just. No, yeah, actually, thank you.
So we're gonna get the flow, the power water, you know, the flow market.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get some kind of a projection, calculation, and then during calculation as to what the pervious surfaces might add to an outflow compared to what would be your ambient flow at the, at this point. Now, that's probably not the most perfect science in the world, but they've got, they got foreknows and nothing to, to do some of those and get some kind of an idea, but either, I just don't think you can just accept, say, well, I just don't think there's gonna be anything there, all right? Let's come up with a number, you know, just come up with a number, we'll go from there. We oughta have one, we have, did we?
No, I, that's, that's probably.
Okay. Who, yeah, we, we want in there, we want, we got one right here. I got, we got a automatic folder right here, we put it.
They're all the same, right?
Andy can keep whatever he wants, we'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Six, six forty-five, uh, what's the date?
June sixth.
Oh, D-Day.
I was, I was looking ahead to, to July and, and July fourth is a Tuesday, that's when our meeting is supposed to be, so are we gonna have the meeting on the eleventh or are we gonna have it on the sixth? Or what are we gonna wait?
Decide one way, yes, I can hear.
Like your other, uh, public hearings that day or?
No, it's twenty-sixth.
You're right.
Six forty-five. Thank you.
Only one.
June sixth, right?
You have something else?
I was just asking about that, July.
Oh, that, okay. We can, uh, we can do it, then you can, next Thursday, Bob, what, what, what's your pleasure, Boris? What, we fall on the, the fourth falls on a Tuesday. You wanna meet a week later or what are we? What works?
Shifted the day and.
That?
No.
Shifted, well, you gotta be careful today, I don't want to be running anything here.
Follows the next week?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, the following week is media.
Let's do that, or do I do it?
You can do it, I do it the following week.
Yeah.
The eleventh?
If anybody goes away or anything on the fourth and stuff.
Well, we will, we won't, we won't say that now, because we'll double check that, make sure that it's not about a problem. But the next meeting will have to stay. What's that?
Yeah, well, it's still snowing and, uh.
Is it hard to believe we're talking about the Fourth of July?
Well, snow is sleeting outside.
It has.
Grapple.
It has, yeah.
It's grapple. It's not sleeting no more, it's grapple.
This time of year, or does it change, does it change because of spring?
The weather people, they don't say it's sleeting, is it's grapple?
It's, what happens is it's freezing in the clouds and then coming down where sleeting goes back around and builds up more ice contact.
I'll take.
Well, where was grapple five years ago?
Yeah.
March of two years ago.
It's, 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 I don't know what you're saying.
That's the explanation that I heard.
I thought it was some kind of a Dutch.
Don't, don't complain, where, where'd they say, I think it was Marquette, Michigan.
Ate it for breakfast, oh, that was grapple, oh.
Marquette, Michigan had two feet of snow yesterday.
Oh, jeez.
So, don't complain.
All right, okay, let's see, let's, uh, where, we, what is your feeling here on, on, on some of this? Obviously, you're getting pushed back, but this is not going to be an L, but, uh, we gotta make a decision, we make, we make the decision, you know, you kinda like to give a heads up and they could do it, they could do it now in between, I don't know if you get any kind of an answer because you have to go back and forth with that, but I, I really can't see where it would be as onerous as maybe there.
Yeah.
As there, as they're pointing out, but we can't speak for that.
I think on the, I think on the, on the bigger map that he showed with the twenty foot, ten foot on each property line is something that could be constructed, would be well, uh, in each lot. I'd, you know, I don't see where that would be an issue at all, I know the lots are plenty big, you gotta, they're wide. I mean, for just regesence homes, I think that'd be fine, but I, you know, definitely would define a swell in between each property line.
Yeah, I, I think we're pretty much in agreement with Hitchcock.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's.
Well, Hitchcock, but I mean, North Road is the one that's a concern.
North Road is a little bit of a, a little bit of up in the air, I just know where our legality is, I, you wanna, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah.
Are, are, are we clear on what we're trying to say, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, your concern is that they're gonna, if they're directing water towards the creek and then the creek's running off and draining onto private property across the street and, you know.
Oh, it's off the field, it's, it's going right to the west.
Yeah.
In other words, this, this, this stream here goes to the west, but it goes eventually through, as Larry said, this Phase Two of Mastriano's, which it borders the old Marina, which outlets into the lake, that's, that's the pathway. But it, it, it isn't, the conveyance is not totally owned by the developer's property now, that's, that would be a concern.
Entire body of water is a federal.
Wetlands.
You have no control.
Even that creek?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially the creek.
And then it, there's enough volume in that wetland, so when it gets higher in that ditch, that it goes out there and seeps slowly towards the lake.
Correct.
That wetland holds it back, it, it isn't a major.
It's like when the beavers come about.
Beavers are all over.
Building the dams.
But that has to be, that has, that's the document.
That's across the North Road.
That's all.
That's up to Forest, you should have had that documented.
Had the forest Mastriano's.
I looked at that.
Yeah, there's this lot.
And I did see that, when we were looking at it before, I went down there, everything goes to that wetland, but just like slow, that wetland slows it down before it gets to the west.
But, but, it's probably legal, legally, you gotta.
Four families of beavers.
Well, they think, if, if we've got a good reason, then you're good.
Well, that's why I think if we had the restrictions, that would kinda cover ourselves in a sense, because.
Well, yes and no, you're still, you're still, that, you, you're talking, the restrictions, I know, I'm, I know, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the restriction is talking about the water on the lots.
Right.
We're talking about, eventually the water's coming off the lots, no matter how, what you do.
Coming, coming from the northwest.
It's coming off, it's coming off the lots and going, and going. That's right. This way over here, no matter what happens on Hitchcock, that's going to a town conveyance and then town can control that outflow right directly to the creek. I don't, we're not gonna ask questions about the other side of the road, okay, I know what that is.
The deed restriction is one thing, because that's just saying, hey, property owner, don't put anything in here because this is reserved for drainage purposes, but the larger question is, is their drainage plan going to work according to their representations? That's, that's all, I mean, that's the bigger picture and, you know, I think the board has a, has a right to ask, um, you know, your folks to just confirm that.
Yeah. Okay, all right, let's, all right, do we have anything else, Larry? After careful thought and consideration, no.
No, just any more water property, uh, lot pause on that, the, uh.
The one, the, the commercial, now the commercial?
The old, uh, auction house down around thirty-one.
Uh-huh, sure.
Graves, the tenant got evicted and supposedly there's two tenants. I've already notified the owner, they may have come to the planning board, had it in use.
Are we talking to the one, the one on Lakeport East? Is it the gray building or are you talking on Thirty-One down towards Bridgeport? Okay.
Across from the old Madison?
Yeah.
Now, that was all a plant, wasn't that, was those are plants, buildings in there or something?
Yeah, that was the old lumberyard, that's where the plant had his lumber, the delivery yard.
Okay, all right. Well, the point is, that was a, that was a problem years ago, I mean, they, they split that stuff up and it became, that's why you've got, if you look at your map on Thirty-One, you got little pockets of commercial here and there where, and they're, they're really the old plant properties and stuff.
Little plant.
All right, you good? Let's have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Any discussions concerning such, not hearing any, elders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.